Welcome.
Yes.
Good evening, Council. We provided a brief overview of the process for the RFP for the Imperial Crossing Development in adjacent parcels. We did receive two applications, Rooftop at Riverside, which is a submission by Mr. Jim and Mr. Chris Magnus for the development of the Levin Lot. The second received was Imperial Crossing by Shay Trask and CGD LLC for the development of the Bamboo Parcel Imperial Crossing. At this time, what staff is requesting is that you receive the presentations and that we move forward as far as council's pleasure. The question we will be asking is if you wish to consider continued discussions with one of the applicants, both of the applicants, or any combination of such. So that's a question from staff at this point. And with that, the first presentation is the Rooftop at Riverside.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We're actually the other one.
Okay, yeah, I thought.
Do they want to go first?
You guys are queued up. If you're queued up, you're more than welcome to.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
We've already lost some of our guys here, so we're having them available by phone, but this way you won't lose yours.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is the other project. Do you want to announce it or no?
Yes, the other project is Imperial Crossing by Shay Trask CGD LLC for the development of the Bamboo Parcel.
So I am Shay Trask. I'm going to be a member of CGD LLC moving forward on this project. CGD LLC is actually based on Connor and Craig Gaskins. They were here earlier. They are Connor and Gaskins who will be doing the general contracting on the project. They did have other things to get to this afternoon, so I will keep this as brief as I can as well, even though it is a large project that I think you all want to hear a lot about. This is the Imperial Crossing area that's five plus or minus acres. It is along the Imperial River and along Old 41. It is on both sides of the Imperial River. Throughout this process, we're going to be talking about the north and south side, so we're going to use that river as a dividing line. We are not going to be going after the other two parcels, 27-400 and 27-333. We feel that those are good parking lots for now for the city, but we also feel that they're great spots for custom buildings or somebody that really wants to go there. And right now, we're doing more of a general development process for the other land and feel like it'd be better use for the city down the road. So we tried to capture what the mission of the city really was on this project, and what we know that you guys want to do is maximize this land, have a development that's really going to take off for the rest of downtown Benita. And when looking at this, I actually did a project very similar to this in 2013 in Iowa. And we did four large buildings. It's just now finishing up with the fourth building. The city gave us the land for free. They also gave us 10-year of tax abatements, and it's turned out to be a $40 million project that has since spawned another hotel less than two blocks away, a huge condo facility less than two blocks away. They've recently bought more land downtown with that money from the past developments, and it's taken a downtown that was kind of struggling to something that's absolutely thriving right now and has a great stigma up in Cedar Falls. We're going to be referring to that development a few times just because it's something that I've seen work in the past. The lead developer on that is a Harvard graduate, and that's where everything kind of spawned from with this proposal and how everything works. So again, our main mission statement is to just make something great for downtown that's going to be good for short-term and long-term growth. Our proposed design is going to be a mix of commercial and residential. We are going to have an anchor development that is going to be something to bring people in from outside the area as much as an hour away. And we're going to have some community features as well, which we're going to be giving back to downtown Benita because right now that's used sometimes as a park, and we know that that's going to be something that we don't want you guys to lose. We think it's going to be a win-win on several different occasions. So this is our overall site plan. You'll see that we have chosen the north and south side to outline them separately. It is going to have a total of 120 residential units. That can be plus and minus a few as final designs get critique. There's about 32,000 square feet of commercial or indoor space total, and that's all on the main level, 6,000 square feet of outdoor commercial, which will primarily be an outdoor bar facility, and then a total site parking of 259 total parking spots. Phase one consists of the south side. We'd like to do this in phases to minimize risk on everybody's part. We feel as a developer, it's going to allow us to better judge the market as we move forward, and it's also going to allow the city of Benita to give us a parcel, make sure that we act as what we said we were going to do before we take over the second parcel, and so on. This parcel on the south side is going to have our largest building. It's going to be our mixed-use building with a rooftop pool, commercial on the main level, an outdoor bar that goes along the river, an open park area for small gatherings, things like that, and then a parking lot on the backside, as well as two small parks for right now along Wilson and Old 41. Once that one is complete, we'll see a phasing later. There will be a north-side parcel, which will consider a riverside park. This park will be much bigger than the south side, but much of this land is actually floodplain, and we want to leave it as naturally preserved as possible. This will have small gathering spots and not just a big spot for people to gather. It'll also have a lot of great walking trails. This will have a mixed-use building similar to the south side, but it will not have the same amenities as we will be sharing those amenities with the south side. And we do have a bridge that walks across. There will be a dog park on this side, as well as a parking lot. We do have a third phase, which we want to use to help judge the market. So you'll see 1B, 2B, all along Old 41. Those are going to be commercial spots that we can have custom-built for specific people. The big reason for these is that we've been cautioned by commercial developers and commercial agents in the area that commercial real estate is really not needed right now. We kind of disagree, and we think that as demand builds up for the rest of the project, these buildings will be needed, but we feel that the first two buildings are going to need to come by first, make sure that we get that demand there, and then these later. 1C is on the bottom along Wilson Street, and we really wanted to hide that parking lot as much as possible and have a great frontage on Wilson because that's going to be where a lot of people walk down from the Banshell and just other areas of town. So what we wanted to do there was put up three-story townhomes. That could be more custom-done, and a little bit bigger living facility for people that wanted to still live in that downtown, not have much yard, but wanted to live down there and have more space to live inside. Our parking actually ended up being great with several redraws of this. I believe this is planned like 30 or 35, somewhere in that realm. We've moved parking lots around, moved things, and it actually turned out to be extremely efficient. By having the parking lots back behind the buildings, we've put them along the roadways, so they're easy to get to. We've also made the access points to these parking lots far away from Old 41 to make sure there's no cluster when pulling onto 41 eventually. We know that that can be a hard spot to get onto sometimes with current traffic, so we're just going to relieve that as much as possible. We also, from the north side, you can head up towards Terry very easily without even going to Old 41. And same with the south side, you can head down Feltz instead of having to go on Old 41 as well. Three things we're going to be giving back to the community is, one, a 10-foot-wide bridge going across the development on the side of the Feltz area. This will allow bikes, walkers, everybody to get across there without having to go towards Old 41. We've heard that there's a lot of traffic issues with Old 41 and Terry with bikes, so we're trying to get as much of that traffic away from that area as possible. We also feel that by putting this bridge in, we'll have a half-mile walk path around our whole development. So if somebody's just looking for physical exercise, it'll be a great area for that. We also have the two parks on the north and south side. Again, south-side park for more gatherings and the north-side park for just more relaxation in small groups. And then we're also going to have a fitness center on the main level, and then a rooftop pool on the south-side building. Now, these, we want to do a unique concept to where we can offer memberships to everybody else in the community. And what this will allow is if somebody's going to build a smaller home downtown, they don't have the space for their own pool or their own fitness facility, they can join ours. And it's going to create almost like a condo atmosphere where they're going to have a clubhouse just a few blocks away. We hope that that encourages more dense growth downtown with smaller townhomes, things like that, and allows people to have amenities that they normally wouldn't. So moving on, we've got construction. We are an all-concrete construction. We're going to have concrete floors, concrete walls. We're going to have steel roofs to kind of give it the old Florida charm, the Key West vibe. We're going to have impact doors and windows to be sure that these are built well and have good soundproof. We're also going to have two elevators, one elevator in each of the largest mixed-use buildings. We want to be sure that these are handicap-accessible to everybody, and we feel that these buildings are going to do that very well with the elevators in both main buildings. That is also a main reason why our buildings are connected and not a bunch of smaller buildings. These renderings are not final. These are based off of shapes and renderings. We are going to partner with MHK to be believed as our main architect, and they're going to be the ones helping us do our final drawings. We have divided up the buildings into kind of two-tone shapes to help with DPZ's comments from earlier in this process. We've also simplified the buildings a lot from some of our earlier architectural drawings just because DPZ, again, wanted them to be simpler and more old Florida. This point of view is looking from the bridge, looking to the northeast. This shows the smaller one-story building just ahead of us and the building on the north. We are also looking down the river, and then you'll see the large park area. This view is from kind of on the other corner there. This is from the south park, looking to the northwest. You'll see on the left is the large tiki hut. We have that to be about 6,000-square-foot tiki hut. And what this is modeled after is our started rendering of a food truck park in Celebration Park. They have an amazing bar on the water that gets a ton of traffic. People come from, I mean, all the way up from north Fort Myers just to go there to have a drink and eat some food. And we want to be a destination like that where people want to come, enjoy, have a great time. And so that large tiki hut is going to be our main facility where people can eat, and we're going to call it a dining garden or an outdoor bar. And you'll see up on the edge of that, these little deck-like atmospheres with little tiki huts. We're calling those Crows' Nest, and those are based off some old Florida tiki huts from around Florida, that it's really been a, like, kind of a tourist attraction, a place to take pictures, something to go see. And it's a dining experience up about 12 feet in the air that kind of makes you feel like you're up in a table in a treehouse. It's something that we need to look forward further as far as ADA compliance and how all that's going to work, but we believe we can get it done, and it will create an amazing experience for people to talk about all over the country. Really, when they're on vacation, it'll be a destination to stop by and see. Along the left side here, underneath the green portion of the building, will be the fitness facility that will overlook the large grass area, so we'll have cool views there. Headed towards the right will be our four smaller restaurants. These are going to be similar to taking the place of a food truck, and we're going to call them more of concession stand-type restaurants. We want them to be very small, very easy to maintain, and our hopes are that we will get other restaurants from in the local area to want a small second location as a place to not only advertise their food in this great facility, but have a second spot that they could have instead of having a food truck. As we move over to the bridge again, you'll see the tiki bar is now on our left. It also has a larger unit up in the Crows' Nest for, like, birthday parties or something small like that. We're thinking between 12 and 16 people. And then on the end of this one, we have the largest restaurant that will wrap around Old 41, have access to the tiki bar as well, and we believe that's going to be a partner restaurant with the tiki bar because they will be the spot where in bad weather, you go inside the restaurant instead of staying outside. We've noticed also there's a lot of covered area in this. That is because of rainy days in the summer. We believe that a lot of people don't go out to destinations like this in the summer because it's going to rain or because the sun's too hot, so this will give us shade, and it will also protect us from the rain. Notice that the buildings on both the north and south corners along Old 41 are one-story buildings. We've done that, again, with DPZ's recommendation of trying to phase in a little bit taller buildings towards the middle to not make it so in-your-face as you pull up to this development. You'll see from an aerial, it really creates a corridor in the middle along the river. We know that the city wants to make sure that that river frontage is really well-accessed. They want to make sure that we make sure that it's used, and we believe by putting both of the parks along the river and putting our largest buildings along the outside areas, we're creating a nice corridor in there that'll feel like a courtyard and a common space in the middle to entertain and have fun gatherings. We know that in today's coronavirus times, that these are not exactly what people are banking on right now, but as a developer that I follow up north in Iowa, he said that we're not developing for today. We're developing for two to three to four years down the road, and we're keeping that in mind with this development of how things will hopefully be more back to normal than they are today. A motto we are proponent of a lot is a live-work-play lifestyle, so we've been focusing on that throughout this whole thing of live, work, and play. Moving down here, we'll see some comparable properties such as Mosaic down the street, Rasol and Crest. Mosaic is one that we took a hard look at before designing this. The main reason why we only have one-bedroom units in our main buildings is because Mosaic's number-one sellout was large one-bedroom units. And we figured instead of go for small one-bedrooms, large one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, let's leave the two- and three-bedrooms to other people. Let's focus on the right-sized one-bedrooms that are the majority of what people want and go after that market. Comparable commercial will be things as all sorts of shops, and we can do commercial office space. We're going to really let that happen as the market tendencies that it wants to see. The outdoor bar is, again, kind of mirrored off Celebration Park. That was an area on Bay Shore that was not looked at favorably, and as that park comes in, the real estate around it has grown exponentially, and it has been a huge success down there. So construction overview is, we're looking at a total development cost of about $26 million. Our timeline is anywhere from six to 10 years when doing the phasing, and we believe the market will dictate a lot of that demand. Again, our construction processes are going to be concrete blocks, steel roofs. You can see there, we're using a lot of things that are going to be hurricane-rated. Our general timeline. The fiscal impact to the city, this is something that we know is extremely important to the growth of the city long-term. You'll notice at the bottom, highlighted in bold, we come to a total of $17 million in just city property tax over the next 30 years. Now, given that our development is going to take away a little bit from a 10-year possible tax abatement, we're going to possibly pull away $2 million from that total. With that said, even with our tax abatement, you'd still be looking at a total of approximately $15 million over the course of 30 years once these buildings are completed. You'll see that the initial phase is our initial development at a total of $6.3 million in property taxes. The next is residential housing, which would bring in, we believe, another $3.7 million in added tax revenue, and this will be people that are refurbishing houses or building new in downtown. The final one are other developments that will come into the area. One development that did get shut down several times before was Longitude. It was a luxury condo development downtown. It just wasn't time for that development. We believe that as our development gets done and it gets more demand downtown, people will be more excited about properties like that, as well as another hotel and potentially another lease space downtown. The financing will be done similar to what we did in Cedar Falls, where we will look at local investors first. We'd like to get up to 35 investors in on this. We feel that this makes them become fans and also advocates for our property. As we get more people invested into this, they want to encourage other people to go down there. My family's personally invested in the one up north, and it has done wonders for that development. People are wondering where to eat or where to rent. That is the first place that they recommend to everybody. So by gathering more local investors, they'll be happy about it. So we pulled a few pro formas on this. You'll notice when we pay the city $2.6 million for the land and do full taxes, we come to a return of basically zero. We've really wanted to get the city to $2.6 million plus all of our costs and make this work, and when vetting that proposal, we could not make it work with our current construction The second one, we did a $0 for the land and no tax abatement, which would give the city right away about $200,000 worth of income once this is all completed, and that one still turned up at 3.4%, which investors are not going to love. As we got to $0 for the land and a 10-year tax abatement, we were able to get our return above 6%, which was our target goal of 6.85%. This is, again, preliminary numbers based off of our blueprints, but we would like more time to make sure that these numbers are correct, and things could change a little bit from there. So we had a few questions for the city. A lot of this first paragraph, the first page was preliminary things, things that we thought if you guys knew, we could do, such as Enterprise Zone, new marks of tax credits. That would help us be able to get more funds, which would in return be able to get us more money for the land. DPZ, making sure that our form-based code would follow what they wanted to do, and then also any other things along that list that we can make accomplishable. Our main proposal that we have came up with at this time is that we would like to enter into kind of a free look period with the city. This will allow us 12 months to go into further due diligence on the property. And what we would like in return for that 12 months of due diligence is just the committal that we will be able to get the land turned over to us at $0 and a 10-year tax abatement. The way that I've done this in the past is that when we hand over each parcel of land, it is done with a guarantee that we build a certain amount of real estate within a certain amount of time. In this parcel, it'd be the south parcel, would be $10 million project within two years, and in the north parcel, a $7 million project within two years, to ensure that the city will get tax funds back from that, and we didn't just take the land and do some sort of land banking. Connor and Gaskin is our main developer on this and is our sponsor and our GC. You'll see they've built several hotels, condos. They are from Naples, so they are a local trade and would be bringing local contractors. With that, I thank you guys for listening to our proposal, and welcome any questions.
Great, thank you. Counsel?
It's your pleasure.
I have a question.
Yes, Chris.
I think we have a problem with respect to the land, giving the land away plus the 10-year tax abatement. So going through your pro formas, is the... So, going through your pro formas, is the problem basically that the parcel is not big enough to construct enough square-footage units and so forth? So for example, if you were somehow able to acquire the land immediately north of this site along with this property, is there a possibility of having a big enough project to be able to afford paying something for the land?
I appreciate that question. We actually looked at whether that was our big constraint, and we're running into a few things, and this is very common when you're the first new project in a downtown that hasn't had a great project go yet. And our biggest issue right now is not really the size of the project, it is the confidence in the project. And when we talk to commercial real estate agents around town and we say, hey, we're putting in 32,000 square feet of indoor commercial on the Imperial River at Old Forty-One on a two-lane road with very little traffic, or with traffic but not comparable to four-lane roads such as Benita Beach, they all just think we're crazy. And so we have to get that pricing down to a number that encourages people to get in there and makes this really a booming-on-the-river facility and enticing enough to make that work. I believe that if we could get rents way up, that they, obviously we could pay more for the land, but right now that's probably our biggest restraint. It's just when we talk to commercial agents, we say, hey, what do we need to charge per square foot to make this project work and make you guys confident in selling this? And when we go up to even $18 a square foot, they start to get really nervous. And so they told us if we're at $12 a square foot, we think we can make that work, that's a confident project to move forward. And that's something where we're going to put a ton of money into this, and it is a big risk to put that much money into downtown Benita, and so that's what we're basing a lot of this off of.
So, if there were other attractions, facilities, that would be drawing more people to downtown Benita outside of your project, whether it's at the Bandshell or other restaurant, food facilities, entertainment, would that be a positive with respect to your view of the project?
Absolutely, and I think the Bandshell's already done a fantastic job of bringing people down there. That is where we've gotten a lot of our feedback from people just saying like, hey, if this project was down there, would you consider moving there? Would you consider being down there? Would you like to go to an outdoor bar facility similar to Celebration Park if it was three blocks away? And we've gotten an overwhelming number of people saying yes for the residential spots. It's a matter of we don't really have any good comparables for the commercial, and with 32,000 square feet of indoor commercial alone, that's a huge undertaking that we're just putting a lot of risk out there, and we hope it goes really well. We've talked to CBRE a little bit about possible profit sharing in the land, that if we can set up some sort of agreement with lawyers and everything as far as down the road, if we do get those rents to come up to $18 a square foot or maybe 24, maybe there's something in there for the city that says, once we hit a certain cap, you will get more money for the land, because we would love to give you more money for the land. It's just when we ran the initial pro formas, we had to back out something, and that's really the only place we could give.
How many commercial groups did you speak with?
I believe four in total.
Okay.
So, a lot of agents, just kind of hearsay. I'm actually a real estate agent myself, residential down in Naples, but I know a lot of commercial agents, and that's kind of where we started discussions, but then we had other discussions besides just CBRE as far as what was needed down there.
Okay. Fred, did you have a question?
I think you did.
Yeah.
And then we'll come over.
My question is, I remember when I had my one-on-one in August on this project, and at that time, they were projecting, and correct me, Arlene, if I'm wrong, somewhere in around $400,000 a year in taxes for us out of that, that's with paying for the land and all that, and they've made improvements to the project, but the only thing bothers me about this, if we were to agree to this, give the land away, 10-year tax abatement. If we had that in the initial deal, I believe we would have had more proposals. We can debate whether we should have accepted them or postponed it, but even with circumstances being what it was, that's a tremendous incentive. It would have drawn, in fishing terms, the better the bait, the more the catch, and so I think we would have had more proposals. I don't have a problem with delaying when we get money. I don't have a problem even with a year or two of tax abatement. We talk in terms of 10 years and giving the land away, it doesn't sit real well. I'm not saying I would definitely say no, but I'm more inclined to say no than yes.
Thank you. Mike, did you have anything?
The project's definitely better than what was first shown to us in the one-on-ones, but I have a big problem with giving away the land, mainly from the standpoint like was stated, that if we were going to do that, we should have stated that at the beginning to see what kind of proposals we would have got, instead of, you know, tweaking it after the fact, because I'm sure a lot of other people would have liked the opportunity to bid on it knowing that it was going to be free land. So the project's definitely better, you know, we do need something, you know, down there, but I just can't see, you know, giving away the land without opening it back up and that being part of the request for proposals.
And real quick, do we know how many people CBRE sent this out to? Was it like 1,200 developers?
No.
CBRE is on the line. Leanne, are you there?
This is Mike, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
Arlene?
Yes, Mike, could you go over the amount of folks?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We actually sent out to 24,000 investor developers, so it was a very significant marketing campaign, and, you know, as far as I can tell you, you know, I think it was very widely marketed and to a lot of people, and we've evaluated all of these proposals and submitted the information that you requested.
Thank you, Mike. So where I was going with that was out of, let's say, 24,000, let's say even half of those opened their email, and then another half actually looked at it at all. That's 6,000 people, and out of that, we have one here and one sitting over there. And as a good developer, really price should never be the thing that steers you away from an RFP, because when the city already owns the land, if you've gone through tasks like this before, you know the big goal is their money at the end of the line, and the city has a big one up on most people, because when you build a building, you pay taxes for the rest of that building's life, and that's the number-one thing that gets paid. Rent might not get paid, mortgage might not get paid, but taxes will always get paid, and that's something where any of those developers that looked at this, if they weren't thinking, man, there would be potential for free land if I had to do it, or there would be potential for tax abatement, it just makes me think they're not interested. And something we've ran into is the size of this project, and you brought it up earlier, if we had more land, would it be more feasible? If it was a lot bigger project, I think you'd have bigger developers that are better developers coming in and taking a bigger look at this, such as Colliers, huge names like that. But this is a small-grade project when you actually think about it, in an area that's not totally desirable, and when they can go spend $300 million closer to the beach such as London Bay, they don't even want to mess with this. When they're selling $20 million houses in Port Royal, they're not going to look at a $26 million development with 120 doors.
Okay. Laura?
I guess I'm echoing Fred, Mike, and Chris's concerns too about it, and it's almost like, you know, you're going to a Muslim wedding and you send your daughter out to get a burka, she comes home with a bikini. I mean, you know, you guys really altered the terms, and I don't know, I believe that if those were the terms, there would be some, and maybe they wouldn't be the Colliers, but it might have been, you know.
Okay. Jesse?
Yes, a couple things, like, this is a, I thought about this, so don't take any of this personally.
Yep.
All right. It's an absolute no for me, and let me tell you why it's an absolute no. From the beginning, the changes that were made to the initial deal were borderline offensive, because though it may be small-grade and undesirable in the eyes of you guys developing it, that's the heart of our city, and you don't get to do the heart of your city more than once. So, this deal would have had to knock my socks off as far as the deal went, or the project itself would have had to knock my socks off. Neither one of these are the case here. Essentially, the buildings look not much different than I can see in student housing all around the FGCU corridor, and there's a way bigger focus on the residential as opposed to the commercial. When we said mixed use down there to activate the river, we weren't talking about putting essentially student housing, or what looks like student housing down by the river. Additionally, taking $2 million off the table because you're passing the cost of the supplies on to us, when you put in the bid and we said it couldn't be that material, I don't know why you pass that on to us. You guys put in for the bid, so then to come back and then try to get $2 million off the table, a 10-year tax abatement, and you guys are still looking for investors, and you still want a year, that's just, that's such a big ask, and for me, that's a no, because, listen, if we were going to do any of those things that I just said, the tax of any of those things, we would have written it, and then we would have had people apply to it so that they did it under the circumstances with which we got everything from the city's standpoint that we wanted, not this way, because this way, we're in the passenger seat and you guys are driving, and for downtown, that's not acceptable. I'd like staff to start the process, with or without CBRE. I mean, I stopped my, as you guys know, I was 15 minutes into my call with CBRE and I ended the call, because as soon as I heard they took the money off the table and they wanted all these other things, the format in which they're asking, I'm not saying the things that they're asking for are completely ridiculous, hear me right, the process by which we got there is what I didn't appreciate. So I would like to have staff start to begin after this, assuming this goes the way I think it does, start to prepare an RFP to go out in six months, with or without CBRE, what we would have to logistically do, because I think CBRE in and of itself is a different There's no second chance to do our downtown. This is it. I mean, we have, this is the uncharted territory, this is the wild, this is all we have left, and you'll never be able to do it again. So, once again, it would have to be a great deal, and it would have to be spectacular, it's neither, and I'm sorry, I'm definitely a no.
And part of our design, just in a little bit of defense on that, is we did listen to DPZ's guidelines, that we heard DPZ was hired by you guys, and we, for lack of better terms, dumbed down our design extensively due to that guidance. So I don't know if that's us, or if that's something that needs to be looked at as far as what we're being told, but we thought, we took all your feedback and changed it into this. So if you're not wowed, I'm kind of shocked by that.
Well, you took the feedback, and I appreciate the fact that you got rid of the food truck component, but you did not, but what you did was say, now I'm going to ask for it for free with 10 years tax abatement and a year to get my ducks in a row so I can find 35 investors. That for the most significant part of our city, that's too many things up in the air. I mean, so that's an absolute no.
And you got six months to get your act together.
But when it goes back out to bid, I hope to get to see you again, but I just, that's where I'm at.
Amy? Thank you, Jesse.
I too am, let me put this kindly, underwhelmed. I was underwhelmed with the first pass-through, and I'm underwhelmed with the adjustments that were done. I don't think the area along the river is at all exciting. I don't think it ever will be exciting the way it's proposed to be designed. I also think that we should recognize that any tax abatement would only be the city's tax abatement. I think your decimal point is in the wrong place, by the way.
We moved it in this. It was recalculated.
All right. And so, and the amount, even the abatement that you get from the city is minimal. I mean, if that breaks the project, then you don't have much of a project. So I am in favor of just tabling this, I don't know about six months, I think we need to think about certain things, you know, like CBRE and all the other things. I think that the city needs to get together, maybe in a workshop, and decide, just really do we, in the city, what we want down in the city? I'm willing to give the land away at this moment if there was a really exciting project where what was being delivered was what we wanted.
What we asked for, right.
We do not want this. I don't want it, maybe you want it, I don't know, but I don't think too many people want this. So I think we have to go back to square one, and I'm proposing that we just don't go forward with this.
Can I add something?
Yes, Chris. Chris, then Jesse.
Okay. Yeah, I'm where you guys are at in terms of, you know, we need to table this and think about where we go going forward. What I'm trying to figure out is what we can learn from this, and it seems to me like what we can learn from this is that perhaps we need to focus on other things that can bring people down into downtown and create a more active lifestyle downtown that would then give commercial agents more of a second thought about, well, maybe commercial space does make sense. So I'm not sure that you're going to get that accomplished in six months. I think you have to sort of wait and see, you know, I think there's, I mean, if we set the thing out today, even, I don't think we get much of a different response back. So I think we've got some time, but I think it's what we do with that time, and it's the kinds of things that, you know, we may be looking at with the wonder gardens, it's the kind of things we could do on other parcels, it's Jim Magnus's food truck idea that we could talk about. I mean, I looked down at the Mosaic property, and I don't see any of that real estate, the commercial piece of that filling up. So it just seems to me like there's some, there's other things that we can be doing, and, you know, I think, quite frankly, they probably did about as good as they could do, even though it seems to offend us. They might be closer to what reality is, given what's going on, and so maybe we just need to refocus what our attention first should be.
And my only, I mean, my only thing with that is, what is, okay, so, six months from now, we're past the election, we're past the beginning of the new year, council's settled. If there's not the, if we don't have the people who are going to come to us, then we don't have to do it, but there's nothing wrong. I mean, at least if we say, hey, in six months, we're going to look at this again, at least the message isn't we're rolling up the carpets on downtown because of COVID, because I don't think that's the right direction. I think we need to still be moving forward, getting something done there. I just think it has to be a deal that works for us.
I don't disagree, I just, all I'm saying, maybe there's other things, other parcels, other things we can get done which makes the crossing the river sites more attractive to people as investors and as tenants. That's all I'm saying.
And maybe we're putting too much pressure to follow DPZ, because, like, that building's beautiful.
We agree. We totally agree, but...
So maybe DPZ we need to chill a little bit on.
And that's where our initial one was more Fifth Avenue Naples, a little bit more modern, had more of the white stucco, that kind of stuff, and that's what we were told to completely dial back and make simpler, and I'm not saying it's wrong.
But the windows.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
The arthrex, that building?
Yeah, but it also gets expensive, and that's where Longitude, the project that you guys have had here before, has always failed to go to that next step, is because it just costs too much to be the initial project. And another thing, just from developer feedback to you guys, was we got a lot of mixed feelings from we want small buildings to we want a lot of development, to we want a parking garage, to we want it to not be invasive, and I don't mean any disrespect to anybody here about that, but I just think that's a good discussion to figure out, when you're sending this out as an RFP to developers, what do you really want? And two, if you're able to do no cost on the land and possible tax abatements, re-selling out this RFP with those... um, re-selling out this RFP with those as fishing lines, basically, to get people in, um, this development could sit on the sidelines, and I'd love to see what other people come up with, with that same thing, because I would think, as most developers do, this is not uncommon practice to get free land from a city and have tax abatement, even if it's very desirable land on the river, like, that's a great parcel. It just takes the right amount of money to make it all work, and that's where we ran our head against the wall.
And don't take me the wrong way, I agree with you that it's not unheard of to do it that way, but in those circumstances, it, it's gonna be the city driving, not the developer driving.
Yep.
So, that, that's my only issue with, with that. So, it's not the, the ask, it's the, the manner in which we got to the ask.
Okay. And with that, I mean, we're happy to take feedback from you guys, if it's something where you say you change these 10 things and we think we could make it work, or there's some other proposal that makes downtown flow, um, we're open to discussions, but, thank you for your time.
We'll definitely cover that in our workshop.
Yeah, I, I think you're pointing out a good, um, message to us, is I think we need to clarify a few things here, that we were probably a little scattered in what we, the things that we would prioritize and what we would want down there. So I, we need to do a little work, that's why. And I don't wanna put an artificial timeframe on it. I wanna just immediately, once the new council is settled and somewhat functioning, that we start a series of discussions with various people, so that we can figure out what it is we want down there.
My problem with this series of discussions with various people, you know, one month, two months turns to eight months pretty quick.
Wow.
So, I mean, the, I, downtown, we need, we need to figure out what we can get, and the great part is, every time we go through this process, if it's a deal we don't like, we say no. And maybe we find our, maybe we find our, you know...
But maybe it is what Amy's saying, that we don't really know what we want.
Yeah, I, I, we definitely need to think it through for this, have a city position about a concept.
I mean, I, we did numerous studies, and we said we wanted to put it up for bid. I mean, there was not, it, it wasn't a question of, hey, do we wanna put it up for bid? We've wanted to put it up for bid, but we only got to...
But Jesse, excuse me, we didn't have a, a specific design that we said, do this, and how much is it gonna cost? We never said that.
Right.
Everybody came out, and they came up with their own design and their own interactions with the, uh, commercial and the residential, and the different proportions, whether you have a, you know, a parking garage or don't have a parking garage, all that stuff. I think we, I don't believe we have a, um, a concerted understanding of where we should go with it.
Well, I, I think part of the problem was having the one-on-one meetings, because we couldn't all talk amongst each other.
Right.
We, we, individually, we gave feedback, and so now they have seven different feedbacks that they're trying to meld together.
Yeah, so that's why...
Is there any way with the RFP to where we can do that meeting in all of us together? Or is there no way because of a...
Well, if we select a, if we s- s- select an entity, then we could have a public meeting. It's because we're trying to keep this private, which we did.
Well, I, I just meant if we're gonna do this again, before we get to the public meeting...
No, not really.
Not even like the way, oh, yeah, it's phenomenal.
Look, you know, the other side of this is, you can, you can have a more continuous dialogue. You can have workshops, so you can, you don't have to do it by an RFP, you can, you can basically put the property out and, and leave it out for, for submit, for proposals. As proposals come in, you can workshop those proposals. We can, we can lift a restriction on, on cone of silence, so that there's continuous dialogue. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do to, to open it up widely. I mean, I think the, you know, the issue is, is there, is there fundamental flaws with the proposal, or the land, or the market, or, you know? So I, I think, I think you kinda need a combination of all these things to, to figure it out. But you, you could set the property out today and leave it out, and, and take proposals as they come in, reject them, and, and do formal, you know, offerings on a regular basis to sort of keep it in a line of sight. Um, I, I see proposals from companies like CBRE, uh, CRE locally, LSI, all the time with land availability stuff, so, I mean, there's all sorts of options.
So an option would be to hit pause, but keep it open? It'd be a new RFP, I think.
You can do a new RFP, or you can just leave it out, available, that the city's accepting offers on the property and see what comes out of it.
Right.
And the problem is, there's a difference between trying to get the word out and, and people knowing that it's available. I mean, there's nothing to prevent Mr. Trask from coming back in with a revised proposal tomorrow, or a week from now, or anything after these comments.
I like that approach.
And I think the big thing, like Jesse said earlier, is to put some sort of timetable on it, though, so you say, okay, in a year, let's review this. Have we had any bids? Because if you just let it sit there, too, you don't get any bids after a year, two years, and you're like, okay, we gotta try an RFP or get aggressive about some sort of marketing. Maybe in a real estate market.
And I'm confident the council will get there. Absolutely.
Chris?
But is there a, a risk that, you know, if we keep it open, it's like having a house that's on the market for 18 months? You know, what's wrong with it?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a component of that as well.
I think you're already kinda there from, it's been vacant for so long that...
Twenty years.
We've heard of, 13 years ago, a proposal that spent $300,000 to get ready for it, and then it got denied. And so, that's part of why we didn't go to the full architectural plans, go to everything, because, just like this meeting today, if we would've went through and knocked your socks off, but it wasn't the right ratio of residential to commercial, doesn't matter. So, Fred?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Chris. Chris, let's...
Let me say that, what Jesse said, I think we all have to understand one thing. And we had that discussion back before we had our first resignation. What's going on in the marketplace and the market at the time will dictate what developers tell you will work there. It's, we can't, we can tell this what we'd like, but the Tulane Road, all kind of other things, will determine what the people that have to make a profit and survive after they borrow the money, they're gonna tell you, this will work, this will work, this isn't gonna work. So we, we have to understand that. Now, I think we can put some boundaries, like on tax abatement. Really, you're looking at a lot longer than 10 years here, because it's gonna be a number of years before this gets built, and it takes about another year to get it on the tax roll. So it's, it's more than 10-year tax abatement. I, I'm not in favor of 10-years tax abatement, but I'm in favor of getting, uh, uh, different ideas from people that will say what they feel they can build for us there on that small site. We all agreed it was small, and then we're gonna have to pick the best we can from that.
Well, let me ask you a question. When you came up with the split in terms of square footage between residential and commercial?
Yep.
Was that something that the city guided you to, or was that something your own economic analysis says, here it is?
It's pretty much our own economic analysis. Like I said, this is not Plan One or Two. I mean, we went through 35 plans of this, and it's all just, put it in a spreadsheet and find out what numbers fit, and a lot of it had to do with, every commercial agent and developer was telling us, you have to do residential, because that's the only thing the banks will lend on. And commercial is just not moving right now. Um, I bet I called 15 lenders in one day and had probably 12 of them just say, like, I don't, not even interested. Commercial projects right now? Don't care. Um, second, I said over 20, I think I was at 26,000 square feet at that time, and now I'm at 32, and it's just the commercial lending world right now. And with the pandemic going on, it's not great, but as developers, you look past that to where the future's gonna go. Um, and I think you're just gonna find a hard time that if, if you guys were to actually do this project together and then send it off to people, I think you'll find that it's gonna kinda get back to the same basic thing that we built, just do off the ratios that you'll be able to get lending for, and off what we think will fit on the, the parcel.
I understand.
What about, um, residential building, though? I hear that's like blowing through the mo, sky high. Prices go up, do it anyway. Double the price, do it.
It's doing great.
Which means more people are coming.
Yeah, yeah, and that's happening, and that's why we did so much residential above, is we think they're gonna fill, it's just we need that target audience for downtown Bonita. It's, it's not spending 1.5 million on a condo. Even though it's on the river, that's not where they're gonna spend that, and they have a lot of options to spend 1.5 million right now. A ton of people are building. And the reason why we got to those one-bedrooms, which kinda seem like dormitories, I agree, um, I call them young at heart living units, because our target audience is the GC, or, um, Gulf Coast kids that are out of school, that are like, I don't wanna live with college kids anymore, I wanna grow up a little bit. And it's also the adults that say, okay, I don't wanna be a full adult anymore. I wanna go back to being somewhat of a kid. Let's go back to this easy living, one-bedroom, large one-bedrooms, I mean, the island in these things, I think, are over 10 feet long. So like, you're not in a tiny kitchen, you're in a large one-bedroom unit, which I just think a lot of people in Florida are gonna love. And that was kinda the idea behind this, was to really get the young at heart crowd. We only have 112 units. So in the big scheme of things, 112 units in all of southwest Florida, there's not that many. And I don't know of another place besides getting super expensive, where you can lease and live above commercial space, a restaurant bar, have a workout facility. The rooftop pool is actually one thing that threw our budget way off, it was 400 grand. Um, but it was awesome, and we think if somebody says there's a rooftop pool downtown, they're gonna love it. And then the tiki bar, kind of going above with the crow's nest and going above and beyond, again, that was one of those wow factors, that we thought people are gonna be like, let's go to that tiki bar. Um, we're gonna actually steal a lot of business from Celebration Park down in Naples, because there's finally a second weird destination for better, lack of terms, to go. And that was kind of our goal, was to make something different, funky, um, but attracted people.
You had, uh, you had a very hard task in a very rough economy. Okay, so, I appreciate the, the work you, you put in, and, uh, I don't want you to take away from this that I think you guys are horrible, or this is anything along those lines.
We don't.
But, uh, you guys did what you could with what you had, just not where we're at. But thank you so much.
Yep. We appreciate you guys' time. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
And we might get back.
I believe CBRE has some comments they'd like to add, if possible, as well.
Okay.
Uh, this is Mike McShay, I hope you all can hear me.
Yes.
Just, I will just, a couple of comments were made along the way that I think would be helpful for you all to know. We did send out the RFP to 24,000 potential investor developers. We had actually 99 people, almost 100 people...
Could you speak up just a little bit, or could we...
...outload the RFP. So, a, a lot of qualified developers saw it. I think that, um, there was a comment made about DPZ, and perhaps maybe you need to think about changing. And, and I'm only gonna comment on this, architects, generally speaking, are terrific at design, but unconstrained by market conditions, they can design anything that they want. And I think one of, one of your, uh, commissioners at the councilman said that, you know, you have to be, you know, you have to be able to withstand an investment of $26 million, given current market conditions. And so, what I would tell you is that I think the market in Bonita is, is still unproven, and, um, I'm not sure that it's going to change enough in the six months, that you're gonna get materially different responses. Um, I will tell you also that we see oftentimes where cities, we have a very large project in Jacksonville, another one in Miami Beach, where both free land and tax abatements are on the table in order to make some of the numbers work. Um, I also would just tell you, I, I think, when I said that the market is untested, you know, in this time of COVID, we had a very significant RFP that went out in Miami Beach for, uh, for, uh, granted, a very good parcel of land. We had eight responses. So, to, you know, I, I don't think, I, I think to Shay's point, I think that developers are looking past COVID, and they're looking towards the future, and they're trying to do, or to set the table for what they can do downstream. And, um, you know, I, I, I think it's a great parcel of land. I do think the market's a little bit untested. And I just wanted to share those comments with you, as you all, you know, consider, you know, some of what you're thinking about now, and whether to pause, or to continue on, or maybe do something in the future. So I'll stop there, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And I agree with you, Mike.
Okay.
Would it be okay if I added a little something, Arlene? I'm not sure what the forum is. This is Jeff Gage here, also from CBRE.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, you know, it's funny, I went back and looked at my notes, and I'm sure somebody will fact-check this, but we had a meeting on September 18th, 2019, and there was a lot of discussion about how this property was gonna be taken to market and what your objectives were. And the discussion revolved around, are you selling a piece of land? And I stood up at the time and said, no, we're, we're not selling a piece of land. What we're doing is selling an opportunity to have a developer come in and establish the cornerstone for Bonita. And that's a different task, because as Shay pointed out, his company is investing $26 million in the future of Bonita Springs. If you look at the two projects that are on the dock today, it's almost 30 million. And my notes showed that, um, the mayor asked, well, what should we expect? And go back and fact-check me, but I said, I think we're gonna see something around 26 million. It was complete coincidence and luck that, that Shay's team came in with that, but as I said, you add the two projects together, we're looking at 30 million. That's impressive, especially in a, in an environment where the location is not tested. Uh, we call it a bell cow. It's the first, uh, cow to enter the field, and all the others follow. And it's risky, because that first cow can often get attacked by something that's in the woods that he wasn't expecting, and so Shay and his team have tried to mitigate that risk by saving the property. And if you look at what they're asking for, they're not asking for you to give the land to them today. They're asking for you to work with them exclusively for a year, to fine-tune the different scenarios and listen to what they've presented and why, and also get feedback from you on what you want. I'm a strong advocate of a private process. I, I, I can't see anything, because the, uh, the camera went down, but somebody was saying we should go out and solicit proposals from lots of developers simultaneously and vet them as they come in. I would bet a nickel that's impractical, because most developers don't wanna share their ideas with their competition. So, what Shay's asking for is reasonable. He's saying, I'm gonna work with you. I'm gonna be completely transparent on the economics behind our project. I'm gonna work hard to optimize value for myself as a developer and for the city. But it's a process that takes time and talent, and I'm not gonna invest that time and talent unless I have exclusive control over the site. Those are just a few points that, that I had from my notes, that I thought might help, uh, the council make their decision. Um, again, we're not giving away a piece of land. What we're doing is affording a very qualified team to take this project to the next level, so everybody can see how it'll benefit, uh, downtown Bonita in establishing that cornerstone, which was your initial objective. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would suggest that we pause the process, let the new council, uh, have a chance to review what we've done, uh, and figure out what the direction is. We wanna give staff, uh, we could do it today, or we could wait.
And I know, uh, a couple of constituents have asked for, then a workshop to hear, so...
Right. So, you know, but I do not wanna go forward with this proposal now.
I would, uh, my ask would be that staff would start putting together what it might look like if we were to go back out to bid, and I won't even say six months, I'll say eight months, to make people a little more comfy. So that puts us at...
Why don't we wait until we have the workshop, instead of having...
We don't even have a workshop. We, how are we gonna have a workshop with who?
Well, with, um, with the, with the council. And sitting down, and with guidance, and sort of get together what we want. We, the head, the hodgepodge way of we, we put this together, we get something that we don't want.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I'm asking staff to start putting something together that we can look at, so that we would know what we want. And this isn't a hodgepodge, this was a deal that was completely altered. So, this was a situation...
No, but, I mean, in terms of what they presented, and, and you weren't blown away by it, but they kept simplifying, and we do know that you're not gonna spend oodles of dollars to just try to get a bid, so, but, that's what I'm saying, is that, we, why would, what, what exactly is staff gonna do?
Once again, they're gonna start putting together logistically what it would look like for us to go back out to bid. Because I, I don't like the, I don't even like the optic of a pause, because a pause leads me to think that now we're worried about, you know, a post-COVID economy, so maybe we're gonna just pump the brakes on downtown altogether. I'm not saying I wanna...
Actually, I think the reverse is gonna happen, so I'm not saying that, that I...
Then you agree with me.
Well, I don't believe we should have staff... Well, I don't believe we should have staff do something right now because we are going to have possibly a change. I know we're definitely having a fundamental change in the Center C.
Right.
Okay, so there's going to, so then the next meeting, you might not be here. And maybe that person might say, staff, don't do a thing. So we wasted their time. So why can't we just, we're not pausing. People know it's, no, it is out there. That these lands are for sale. And if someone's following this, they're going to say, oh, okay, they didn't work. Now maybe we can come and propose something.
I'm not sure if you were here when we had three or four people come in and say that due to COVID, we should not develop downtown.
I, I don't know why you keep wondering if I'm here or not. Because I said so much to you.
And I don't understand how you're never caught up on what I'm talking about.
I know, I think I can even name one person sitting here.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think I was there.
Point of order.
Yes, yeah, all right.
Point of order, Amy?
May, may I just suggest, I think we, let's just vote whether we should go ahead with this.
Yes.
That's the first step. And I'm sorry to tell you this, but I have an appointment at three o'clock, which I have to get to. I didn't expect it to last for six hours.
No, and I'm exhausted.
And, um, so could we just settle this and then go on to?
Yes, let's call the question.
All right, I think we should just vote and then we could determine.
We haven't had a motion in a second, but I don't think that's going to be difficult.
I just moved to not go ahead with this project that's been presented. And we could work out the details of what to do with it depending on how we vote. That's what I move.
And Chris made the motion and Jackie made, Jesse made a second. So counsel, is there further discussion? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, further discussion?
Roll call.
And, um, members of the public, right? No, roll call, okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Burton?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Well, isn't a no a yes, how's it go? What, how does it, how did your motion read? That we do not go ahead with this project.
Chris, actually, Chris.
I said that we ta, that we tabled the motion.
Yeah, okay.
That we tabled this project for further review.
And then Jesse made a second to that, so yeah.
You're, you're not moving forward with, with this proposal.
Take my no as a denial of that project.
Okay, then you're voting in favor of that.
You're voting yes, that is.
Okay.
Okay.
Same, yes.
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 Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carrumba?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just got to watch this double negative.
No, right, right. We all went the wrong way. Okay, so are we okay? Um, Amy, we'll keep moving if that's okay with everybody, mayor and council member items?
Uh, no, we still have.
We have, we have one more presentation.
The rooftop, the rooftop.
My mistake.
Yes.
Yes, please. No, we're going on to council member items, but yeah, no, you're more than welcome.
Oh, my God. I don't know what happened today.
Yeah.
Hey, really, what a weird day.
Welcome.
Thank you, excuse me, just a moment while we get set up here.
Sure.
We've got a beautiful flyover presentation of the property and that file was too large for the city computer. So we just need a few moments here to, to get up and running.
Did you do the flying? Or your sister?
I would love that.
Air Media?
I didn't do that.
It's okay, no worries.
My phone woke me up at three o'clock. It's great. Oh, God.
I told my wife.
They did this new sleep app that tells you how much you're sleeping, you know, like how well and if you're snoring and all. But you don't keep your phone ringing. No, no, wait, you're out. Oh, God, I don't know what it was thinking.
You've to a point where you don't agree to anything.
Just get us out of here.
Hey, all right. All right, I'll probably just use the mouse here. All right, Mayor Simmons, counsel, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. We are very, very excited to be out from under the cone of silence. And, uh, we thank you for your vision in bringing these properties forward to get them back onto city tax rolls, get them revenue producing for the city and to allow a developer to come in and provide civic and community benefits. Um, today I'm going to, uh, present our response to RFP number 2002, which is the rooftop at Riverside where families meet for food, drinks, fun and entertainment. Uh, my father Jim and I will be running it. My name is Chris Magnus. Uh, you can find out all about our businesses and our resumes and everything that we do in the city of Bonita Springs on RFP pages eight through 11. But a little bit about us personally, um, my, uh, beautiful and supportive wife, uh, helps take care of our four wonderful, smart, funny and polite children. My father Jim and my mother Suzie are spectacular parents and better grandparents than we could ever ask for. We're very fortunate that we live in the same town, in the same city, very close to each other. We get to see each other on the weekends. I work with my father every single day. I love this opportunity and we put our family values into everything that we do in all of our businesses. Our, uh, construction and design team were here earlier, they had to take off. Uh, Randy Johns and Brian Howell are the co-founders of Phoenix Associates of Florida. They developed, uh, or they founded Phoenix Associates in 1992. They each have over 30 years of, of design build experience. Um, they have worked not only with us on a couple of different projects, but also with the state of Florida for some government buildings in Tallahassee. Uh, you can see them on RFP pages 13 and 14. Our research team is Kevin Lindheim for appraisal. Uh, Kevin earned his MAI and SRA from the Appraisal Institute and he's the founder of Florida Valuation and Consultants that also opened in 1992. Um, uh, our economic impact expert is Stanley Gerberer. He's with PFM Group Consulting. He's been with them since 2019 when PFM acquired Fishkind. Uh, he's a senior managing consultant with expertise in community redevelopment and economic impacts. A quick overview of what we'll hit today, we're going to go over the basics. The RFP goals that you put out are civic uses and community benefits, the community relations and engagement that we expect, uh, financial returns to the city, community considerations. And we've also heard some of the food truck concerns at previous meetings and we want to address those because we think that, uh, we can all get along. Uh, basics of our property, uh, we proposed to purchase the Levin parcel for $425,000 based on the appraisal report from Florida Valuations and Consultants. Uh, this can be seen in document pages 98 through 260 of our RFP. And what is important to know about this is we are offering full fair market value for this parcel. We have given the city a deposit which has been cashed. We have proven that we have our proof of, uh, we have our proof of funds for our equity contribution. You also have a letter from our lender. We are set up, we are ready to go, we have shovels in hand, we want that green light, let us get moving forward. We, uh, on this parcel, we're going to develop an eight pad food truck park. Now, it's important that you know each of these pads is going to have individual connectivity to water, sewer, electric and propane. This will be for, uh, clean water and sanitary disposal. It'll be to eliminate the need for noisy generators and also aesthetic beauty and safety with the propane. You're not going to see stacks of propane tanks along the back of the food trucks. So we're trying to take the community considerations, uh, uh, right up front and make sure that we're developing something that's beautiful for our town. Uh, we'll also develop a two-story covered seating area. It's going to serve drinks and it's going to be just a spectacular view for event viewing at Riverside Park. Uh, we have so many wonderful things that happen right there at Riverside and we're going to be a wonderful asset. Uh, this structure will, uh, will control, will be the controlling structure on the property. So all the management aspects, uh, music, entertainment, everything, uh, management wise will be controlled by the structure, uh, that we develop there. Um, we, uh, in this structure have many civic and community benefits, uh, to mention fireside dining, outdoor courtyard seating, covered patio dining, 600 square foot playground for kids and a mist wall for fun and cooling off. Um, in conjunction with this, we propose to develop 25 parking spaces at the Lemon Tree Lot at our expense and to be counted in our parking calculations. We propose solar down facing lights, which will mean no electricity costs to the city as well as dark sky compliance. The city will maintain ownership of this lot, which is a huge benefit to the city. We will maintain cleanliness for the lot throughout the duration of our ownership of the Levin parcels. What does it look like? Uh, this is our site plan. Um, I'd like to point out that we plan, uh, pervious pavers throughout here. We have artificial turf for green grass forever and our shade structures along in here. The main pedestrian entrance is here and we've got two parking spaces here, eight here, eight here, our retention area, our beautiful dumpster and our food truck pads are equipped with the water, sewer, electric and propane. They're 10 feet by 24 feet. We have a bike rack as we believe will have a, uh, be a big contributor to the multimodal transportation. Uh, this is a 200 square foot enclosed storage shed for the property. Um, here we have our 600 square foot playground with mist wall for the kids. And for more intimate dining, we have our 800 square foot patio, uh, patio deck with fire pit as well. Um, what's important about the city keeping the lemon tree property under their control is that this parking, i- if you think about that property right now, it's gravelly, it's rocky, it's dusty, there are weeds and it doesn't, it's, it's not as beautiful as the rest of Old 41. We can fix that and add 25 parking spaces. Uh, you maintain control so you can still use it for your farmers markets, which the city loves. And we have additional parking downtown for city events. Uh, we're not asking to, uh, rope it off just for our customers. Um, uh, the facade here, um, just to give you an idea, the, this is the east facing part, this will face the Napa side. This is the west facing part. You see that we have the old Florida architecture in here. It's open, it's breezy, it's inviting and we want you guys to come in and have a drink with us. Uh, the interior structure, what's important to look at in this are the bathrooms. City code for this size only requires two bathrooms for men and two bathrooms for women. Uh, we've gone over and above that and increased that count by 75%. It's important to us that it's clean, that we want to use those restrooms and it's important to us that we provide, uh, accessibility and, uh, have enough bathrooms for everybody to use. Uh, the development timeline is very important. Uh, from the ward, uh, ward of the RFP, if you award this to us today, which we do hope you do, um, we have 30 days for the letter of intent, another 120 days to negotiate a detailed development agreement. And after that, we have about another 17 months to construction completion. So it's important that we get this voted on today and approved today so we can get to work. Uh, this is a street view of what the project could look like. You'll see DPZ form-based code influenced how this is right up on the sidewalk right here. This is a great case study for something that be, that can be successful on the Old 41 corridor with this code. Uh, you see the old Florida architecture here as well. It's going to be clean and beautiful and open to the public here. Uh, here's a bird's eye view of the site plan. Uh, here you get a better idea of the shade structures, the playground, the fireside dining with a pergola and also the two stories, two story structure. The RFP goals were to activate the riverfront, increase multimodal transportation, partner with experienced developers and activate the downtown. Um, there's very little that is commercial east on the Imperial River. We believe that kayakers, paddleboarders and boaters alike will come down to dock at Riverside Park and come over for some delicious food and a nice cold drink. Um, the city has spent millions of dollars and countless man-hours on renovating Old 41 and there's a drastic difference in the amount of folks that we see using multimodal transportation from just 10 years ago. And we believe that our concept will bring more people to use the multimodal transportation and achieve that goal for the city. You also wanted to partner with experienced developers. Um, our family developed Bonita Storage Inn in 1998. It was a three-phase project that was completed in 2005. It's a now immature and successful property. We developed Bonita Plaza in 2007 when it was expensive to build and then we had to rent when nobody wanted to open a business in 2008 and 2009. But, uh, the fact is we're hard workers. We do a great job with our projects, we make great negotiations and we create win-win situations. This is a project that we did with Phoenix Develop, uh, with Phoenix Associates. So we've done a great job with them. I'd like to, uh, also tell you through COVID as landlords, we have not lost a single tenant. We are 100% occupied through COVID there. We care about our local businesses, we care about our local families and we do a great job making things work for everybody. Uh, here we have beach storage where we, uh, in 2015, developed a 10,000 square foot warehouse also with Phoenix Associates. Um, this project, uh, was also a great partnership with the city of Bonita Springs. We, instead of going to a mitigation bank, uh, we decided that giving back to the city would be very important. So there are 4.63 acres to the west of St. Leo Catholic Church that we spent the last year mitigating those wetlands. We went through there, trudged through the muck with SFWMD. We took out all of the, uh, endangered, I'm sorry, exotics. Didn't take out anything endangered. Uh, we took out the exotics and, uh, we also planted all the new plantings. We've, uh, recently in June turned that back to the city. We've performed to the letter of our word. So it was a great partnership with Phoenix Associates and also with the city of Bonita Springs. And just to show another development that we've done in horizontal improvements, we have salable lots out in 80 and 31, just in horizontal improvements. So downtown Bonita Springs activation, we're going to bring a new workforce and draw new families to Bonita Springs. It's going to be active. This is a community asset that's going to pair nicely with the Wonder Gardens, the library, art festivals, Riverside Park and all the events that happen there. Because this is an innovative outdoor dining experience that will draw visitors from all over and those visitors are going to visit our local businesses right there on the Old 41 corridor. And this is the highest and best use to maximize potential of this parcel. What you just heard from the first presenter is that strip malls, hotels, residential, don't pencil. Those projects do not pencil. Our project does. And the fact that we're able to bring jobs and I can't wait to show you the tax revenue that we generate, uh, we are not asking for any credits, we're not asking for anything, we're asking for a fee simple sale, just like you would if, uh, one person owned it and another person was buying it. We are going to create a significant amount of revenue. We are, uh, impervious, I'm sorry, we have a pervious use. So Councilman Forbes, like the recent email you sent out to everybody, we can be a fantastic example of how to keep stormwater on your own property instead of shedding it into the water. Um, civic uses and community benefits, we, we hit a lot of these. We talked about the playground and the mist wall, the, uh, fireside patio dining, uh, shaded courtyard, open concept. Um, we just went over the, uh, the green space. We have six times the required amount of open and green space on the property. Um, we have to increase the toilet and urinal count, uh, the community parking, uh, how we inspire multimodal transportation and it even supports Blue Zones project goals. Um, it's a value-add asset across the city and across, uh, all avenues, uh, for making the city better. Community relations and engagement, it's, it's important to us that we give back to our city not only monetarily, but also with our time. Um, I, my father Jim has served in the board of the Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance since inception. It's, it's time consuming, but we do it because we love our city. Um, we are chamber members since 1998, trade members since 98. I've served our community through Bonita Naples Rotary Club for almost a third of my life. Um, and it's been a spectacular experience that I get to share with my kids and I absolutely love the values that we share with Rotary. Um, we also participate in family giving to numerous churches and religious causes. I'd like to point out, uh, locally and specifically BSao as well as the Wonder Gardens and many other individuals both locally and abroad. But I think what's important about this is that we're looking forward to creating a dialogue with our diverse and dynamic neighbors who are affected by our project. And that's, that's paramount in creating trust and adding value to our community through this project. And I want you to keep that in mind, we want to add value to our community through this project. We believe that our participation in neighborhood meetings and public hearings will help ensure that we understand and address any concerns that the public may have. We look forward to providing a clean, fun and exciting experience that is welcoming to all in our community. Um, here's the important part, uh, we've gone over the intangibles, how our project is bringing excitement, bringing activation and bringing, uh, new. excitement, bringing activation, and bringing new people to Benita Springs. Now I'll show you why we are the highest and best use for the money side. We have Stan Gerber available on the phone if you have any questions on the financial returns, an economic impact statement, but I'm going to blast through these real quick. Annually, we're looking at raising $15,000, generating $15,000 in tax revenue for local and state schools. Lee County will get a one-time $93,000 impact fee. They're looking at generating $26,000 annually for Lee County. For Benita Springs, through all of the tax revenue that we generate, we're looking at generating $18,000 per year on a space that is less than a half of an acre. These are big numbers. Throughout the development, we're looking at generating 21 jobs, full-time jobs. We'll have more than 70 folks working on the project over the duration, but the outcome of the wages and the products being used create almost $3 million for the community. Annual ongoing effects of the food truck park, we're going to create 61 through direct, indirect, and induced employment, 61 jobs in the community on a half-acre parcel. Now, the wage, from the wages and the output of all of these food trucks working together and the two-story structure working together, we are looking at ripple effect across the community, generating $6 million for the community. Community considerations, I've gone over the noise a little bit. Our family loves Riverside Park, we love the events there, we love going there. We don't want to compete with Riverside Park. The trucks will not be allowed to play their own music. And we are family-oriented businessmen. We do not want big, loud music all the time. It's important that this be a gathering place for the community, a place where we can hear each other talk, you can hear yourself think, you can have a good time. And I'd also like to reiterate that with the electrical and the propane going out to the pads, there will be no need for noisy generators. We've addressed the bathroom concerns as well. We heard in previous meetings some food truck concerns, and it's important that we address these right now. We heard one group say that food trucks are detrimental to the community and do not inspire development. Now, I think this was a very biased statement, but perhaps so is mine. I think I've shown you here how we can bring, how we can bring all new people to Benita Springs, new families, increase multimodal transportation, and that's because people want to be around food trucks, and this is something that is a long-term, a long-term contribution to Benita Springs. There are complaints that food trucks don't pay taxes, you know, they pay their permits, they pay their inspections, they pay their licensers, but what's important to remember is that this is like approving a brick-and-mortar restaurant with eight kitchens, all right? We have real estate taxes, we have insurance, we have water, sewer, propane, electric, we have all those costs, just like a brick-and-mortar restaurant. There are complaints that food trucks are ugly and fall into disrepair. When you vote for this project, you are voting not only for entrepreneurship for this project alone, but also for eight food trucks, eight business owners who are going to go out there and start their own business. So when you say food trucks are ugly and food trucks fall into disrepair, I think that you are completely avoiding the fact that these food truck owners have a great amount of pride in their ownership of their businesses. And if you've ever owned a business or run your own business or know someone who has, you understand that pride of ownership. And you are, with a yes vote, you are giving that to the city of Benita Springs today. The last and perhaps most important is that local restaurants need time to recover from COVID losses. We heard that over and over. And it's important to remember that many of our Benita Springs restaurants got through 2008, 2009. We all heard. They got through it because they have a spectacular product, a wonderful presentation that we love. We love to go there, and we want them to succeed, we want them to do well. We believe that a rising tide floats all ships. Now, I'm sure that these restaurants have not been made whole, but also remember, the government gave out tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands of dollars in PPP payments that are forgivable loans. I don't know how much these restaurants got, but, and I'm sure that they weren't made whole, but it helps. And when we go back to the timeline, the development timeline that I discussed earlier, we're talking about two years before we can get open, and we will move as quickly as we can, but that is more than enough time for our local restaurants to get up and running. In conclusion here, we hit all of our RFP goals. We activate the river, the corridor, the multimodal transportation. We're going to create tax revenues for schools, the city, and the county. Our project creates jobs and benefits our community. We have immense community uses, and we've gone over those. We're experienced developers with a proven track record. We've got it with the folks that we have for construction, and we also have it with the city on different projects we've worked with, with the city. We will bring an iconic destination to the Old 41 corridor. It's going to be beautiful, family-focused, community-conscious, and an all-around good time. We have demonstrated the intrinsic value and the intangible benefits that we offer, as well as the jobs that we create and the tax revenues that we generate for the city. Our concept is the highest and best use for this parcel. We hope that you find the confidence to approve our responses to RFP based on our family values, our history in working with the city of Benita Springs, and our clear and defined history of success with projects here. Now, I've got a quick video to show you of the flyover. This is what takes, it took so long to get set up. So here you see it's clean, it's beautiful. We've got the playground, the fire pit, the two-story structure for viewing.
It's beautiful, the playground, the fire pit, the two-story structure for viewing.
So the building, the big building that's like the big bar and if the training, you can just go in there if you want?
Yep, right up on the corner, just as the form-based code asks for.
Where's the dumpster hiding in there?
It was in the back.
Is it covered completely? The dumpster in the back?
It's not covered because you need to lift it out, but it's code. All right, so that's a flyover view of what we have. Mayor, council, staff, and CBRE, thank you all so much for the time that you've put into this. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here, and we're ready to answer your questions.
Great, thank you. Fred?
Excellent presentation.
Yes, great presentation.
Really good.
Yeah, it's very good. Do you have to have that pond? I thought, I thought, the reason I'm asking is, I thought that part of the unique thing that we put all this money in Old 41 was to eliminate the necessity of having ponds on the.
That's a grassy area.
Yeah, it's grass, it's just retention.
Okay.
So going back, here we go.
The other thing is.
So it's dry detention.
Do we, do we have enough parking to handle everybody that will want to be there to come in and have the drink and?
Yes, code enforcement says that we, for the size that we have, we need 35 parking spaces. As I show here, we've got the two in the front, the eight on the top, the eight on the bottom, plus the 25 that we proposed to construct at our cost to count in our parking. I would also contend that there are well over, there are nearly 600 parking spaces, public parking spaces from, from Wilson to, is it, not even as far as Dean, to, yeah, to the bioreactor. So from Wilson to the bioreactor, there are over 600, there are close to 600 parking spaces available.
Nobody uses the bioreactor, that'd be good.
And it's 18,000 a year would be the, the city's tax revenue off of.
That would be the city's tax revenue from our real estate taxes that we pay, revenue from alcohol sales, revenue from the half-cent option, revenue from food truck sales, revenue from food truck rent. So that is the city's share of all of those different aspects combined.
Would a long-term land lease be of any more interest in just outright sale?
That's difficult to do because we're willing to put in a significant amount of money, a significant amount of equity. We prefer to own the property that we're going to make our investment on.
Excuse me?
And we're willing to pay you fair market price for it.
Yes, last call for Amy.
I apologize, but I really have to go.
Do you want to vote? Okay. Did you have any questions or?
No, it's, I mean, it's not, I won't be here for the vote, so there's no.
Okay.
The only point is, you know, we do have specified in that industrial park area, that was supposed to be where we have a food truck. So, park, that was what it was sort of planned to do.
Just in response to that, Councilwoman, we started this process on January 14th. We have, we were ready to, for this presentation when it was supposed to be April 28th. We are ready for this presentation when it was supposed to be May 28th. We were ready when it was penciled in in July, we are ready when it was penciled in in September. So we've been ready for this for a very long time, and we've been under the cone of silence, so we couldn't say anything. We couldn't come in here to show you how wonderful our project is. So while this has happened, we've been under the cone of silence here, and we've been ready for this since May. We've been, we could have given this presentation five months ago, well before any of this.
That's not the point I made. I'm just saying that, that is part of our, I think that industrial park across from Shangala, that was the thinking of where there would be a food truck park, not where it is, not, not here.
I think it's important that developers have the ability to make that, make that choice when you have people putting the money in and making that investment. And this is where we believe is the best place for this, not only for the city, but also for the community.
Are you open to a backend?
I was going to say, Fred just spoke. Mike?
Just one of the comments you brought up that people said food trucks are ugly and fall into disrepair. You guys will be managing this site, and you'll be renting out these pads, so I'm sure you're not going to want them to look uglier and disrepair. You'll keep up on top of the people.
That's correct, and we also believe that with this project, these food truck operators will make plenty of money and will be able to make these repairs. And if they refuse to do that, we're looking at short-term contracts, so they will be evicted if they refuse to live up to our standards, which, if you look at any of our properties in Benita Springs, you can see the quality of this, of what we consider high standards in our developments.
And the only other point, you know, the previous presentation, they talked about there's not much of a draw down there already, you know, that's why it may or may not work, and they're taking a gamble. Something like this, you know, as we saw with the park that's already down there on Bay Shore, it's a huge draw. It's going to bring people into downtown. So this is going to help with aspects that, you know, were alluded to earlier, so.
Thanks, Mike. Chris?
Yeah, I hadn't had a chance to see the drawings or the renderings of the food truck park prior to getting the packet on Saturday, and I have to say that I think the design and the layout is, is a, is a, is a great layout, a great design. I happened to be at Mike's bike shop yesterday, dropping off my wife's bike for repair, so we took the time to sort of drive around, look at the lot, think of it in terms of location of the river, think of it in terms of location to the ban shell and the park. And I came away from that thinking that it probably is a great location for it. And as Mike said, in what I was trying to get to in our previous discussion, it's the type of activity, I think, that would start drawing people to downtown and perhaps make a little bit of the, the risk associated with the bigger project at the river more acceptable. These guys are funded, you know. Our previous guys are not funded. That's a big deal, where they've got the money to go forward. So I, I really don't have a problem with the project, other than I think, you know, we need to, that's not, we're not ready to go with it today because, you know, we've got some things like, what are you going to do with the ordinance we just passed last week, or the last council meeting, and we, we don't have a, you know, a document to sign.
I'm not sure that's affected though, because the ordinance was specific to food trucks, not food truck parks.
Well, I don't know.
Is that right?
Derek?
Derek?
I can't remember off my mind, my batteries already died, so I'm looking at John to see if he remembers what he said.
Parks were excluded. Parks were excluded. Is parks were going to taken up on individual?
Well, let me put it this way, we would, we would move forward and make the changes. At the same time, we'd be drafting up the contracts and everything for the actual transfer of the land, so.
So, you know, regardless of what it is, I would make a motion that we direct staff at, you know, as they've requested, to move forward with this and whatever needs to take place so that it can be noticed and acted upon at a, the appropriate meeting as in October or whenever.
Thank you, Chris.
November, I mean, yeah.
Well, I too jove I, I go by it all the time. There's no traffic now, so it's nice. And I was dead-set against it, not here, no way. And you know, this is beautiful, really, it's, and, and it could actually then work, that the other project might work, you know, tweaking, but I think we need to tweak the 450, either the, that price or a backend deal of some sort, because the, that's a really great deal for that piece of property.
We do have our real estate guy who did the appraisal in the package to, on the RFP, we gave appraisals for, for that parcel, and I think it's a very, very fair parcel price for that, and if you'd have questions of the appraiser, we could certainly get him on the line if you'd like.
But did he, did he factor in COVID? See, I don't want COVID factored in at all.
That's not fair market value.
What?
What we're looking to pay is, we're looking to pay what fair market value is today, Laura, and I do believe that, you know, we're in a situation where we're taking a lot of risk here. You're asking that you want to get some type of a, of a back, a backend amount, however, we're paying for the property, we're paying the fair value for the property, and yet you're saying that you want to get some other benefit off the backend. It just doesn't make sense. We're taking all the risk. You know, granted, this is a big investment, you know, and in total, it's going to be over $3 million, and, you know, when you get down to it, we're the ones taking the risk, not the city.
Thank you, Laura. Jesse?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say I really like your project.
Thank you, Jesse.
There's a lot of things I like about it, honestly. I appreciate your history with the city and the number of projects that you guys have done, so I think that you guys are responsible actors in Southwest Florida. We know who you are. I know that I trust you as people, so I assume that you're going to keep, you know, your tenants in order, and I just trust that you're going to do that because I know you do. I would, it wouldn't be me if I didn't just ask this, okay? So just hear me out. If you were paying less than market, would you be open to a land lease? And, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I was in the cone of silence, so I wanted to discuss this with you prior to getting here and actually having to ask you on the dais, but I mean, the rules are the rules. But if you're not open to it, I'm not saying that I couldn't move forward, I just am curious if, if that 425 grand, if that weren't 425 grand, would you be more open to it being a land lease deal with the city?
Jesse, I don't think that that makes any sense for us. We have, you know, we're the ones that are doing the work, we're the ones that are doing the energy and the effort to, to put this deal together. And, you know, when you take a look at that particular parcel, and you take a look at the parcel right next to it, just to the north, that's sold for about the same price, and yet that has a, an asset on it that is operational and they're leasing. It's where KGT Kayaks was, and, you know, that's a parcel that is actually, you know, has cash flow. This is an empty parcel and of similar size and, and a similar price, so I do think that it's a reasonable price to work.
And I think it's a reasonable price, too. I had to ask the question from the city's side, you know, if there's a way we can keep the property, I obviously would love to, but I think what you guys have done down there is not only fair, but I think it'll really start to activate the downtown corridor.
And I also think that, I don't think that it's good for the city to be in, in particular business with, you know, with developers. You know, developer needs to do their project and, and, and make it better for the city, and that's what we want to do.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Well, I made a motion, but I didn't get a second.
I think I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Oh, I think we need to talk about that.
No, I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I made the motion that we direct city staff to.
Continue on with the.
Continue on and do what.
Okay. So that gives them some kind of clarity. I just want them to have clarity leaving today that they're not, it's not. Okay. So that gives them some kind of clarity. I just want them to have clarity leaving today, that they're not, it's not up in the air to the next meeting or next council that we approve it. I just want to make sure they.
I guess in, in our particular point of view, we would, we would prefer to have some type of an approval of the project. And obviously the moving forward on it, because there are going to be substantial expenses for us moving forward to do the permitting, you know, to do the, the LOI, to do the definitive agreement. So it would be our preference, if it serves the council, to move in that direction.
And I.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure we're to that point yet. I, I like the project and so forth, but I do think we need to make sure all the, all the things that we need to consider from staff are taken care of. And I would like to just, you know, slow this down and take, give them a chance to come back and say, we're ready for you to pass whatever it is that we need to pass in order to approve the project.
I hear what you're saying, but the problem is, I mean, they've, it's been nine months they've been waiting. They, they, they can have this ready in two years. They're ready to go. So I mean, I just, I don't know. And staff has already looked at it. They've given us their thoughts on it. Our attorney's given us his thoughts on it. We've all chewed on it for an extended period of time. I mean, I've read, I've gone through it and met with them, so I mean, I know it all. I'm comfortable voting.
Yeah, I'm comfortable voting as well, but Chris did make a motion. Fred said a second.
Let's be clear, you're, you're, either way, you're voting to move forward. Because ultimately, we don't have a purchase-sale agreement. We don't have a rise ordinance. They don't have a special exception for the food park. But what we would try to do is coordinate all that so it occurs at the same time.
And actually, for your benefit, Magnus' family, you might want to wait until the next council because if you get a yes and then you get a council that says no food trucks parks downtown, you're screwed. So why don't we wait until this is done? And did you say, Chris, that it's going to take two years to do, finish?
From city RFP guidelines, we have 30 days to develop an LOI. As soon as you give us the go-ahead to start that negotiation process, then we have another 120 days to develop an agreement. From there, we have 17 months of construction, which is not abnormal. So really, a large chunk.
The restaurants can. I just wanted to make sure it was that two-year.
Yes, ma'am.
The next, the next step in the process is to direct staff when you want to continue the conversation. That means that we work towards bringing you back these agreements, bringing back draft language. So that's the next step in the process.
What's your, because I think we're all, we're all tired and this is all just semantics. The, the approval of the project is essentially approving the selection from the proposal, which then triggers the LOI, which gives direction to staff to, to move the code changes. And so all that starts to occur and both sides start to spend money in further, but today is the time that you're approving the concept so that we can, we can.
Correct, because there is no opportunity for continued assurances through the, the process requires us to bring those documents back to you each time for a vote of approval. You'll have to vote to amend the ordinance. You're going to have to vote on a contract and sale agreement. You're going to have to vote on the terms of development of, should you move forward with the lemon lot, which is the other separate parcel. So all of those terms will have to be voted on in their, in their own right.
Okay, so can I make a motion that we move towards that direction and then you'll come back to us with the appropriate?
That's the motion.
That's my motion, yes.
Oh, is that it?
Yes.
And Fred gave it a second.
Okay, cool. I'm, okay, I'm ready.
Weren't you here?
Yeah.
I was.
Any further discussion, counsel? It's been a motion and a second to move forward. Roll call, please.
And move forward means we're selecting them for this.
Well, we're, we're negotiating, because they might not like what you guys come up with. It's not a.
We're moving forward.
Yes.
We're moving forward.
Bottom line. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Hi.
Ms. Simmons?
Hi.
Councilman Corey?
Hi.
Councilman Gibson?
Hi.
Councilman Forbes?
Hi.
Councilman Purdon?
Hi.
Thank you, counsel and mayor. We appreciate your support.
Absolutely, thank you. Great project.
We're excited to get to work, guys. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thanks for the day.
Sorry it took the whole day.
I hate to admit that I, I'm old enough to know what that music was. Take Five by Dave Brubaker.
All right, we're going to move on now to item 11, mayor and council member items. And this is item A, this was Amy's green sheet, but she's not here.
If you'd like to table it, I'd like to give her the opportunity to talk.
Okay, so we'll table item A unless there's any objection.
Nope.
Okay. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Dwight?
Dwight would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier, that looks like a good project, that rooftop. We got to figure out what we're going to do with those trucks. So the truck's going to be there every night, every day, but they come in and go. I guess, that's, I really like the, like the idea that what they're going to do there with this water park and everything else. Looks real nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
My name is Marie V. King Newman, and I was in Bay Shore before even the food trucks. And I did a hotel there, very successful, with good imagination. And then, then the Tipsy Segal was sold to Rebecca Maddox and her group, and they have done a great job. And we worked together in revitalizing Bay Shore. But my late husband got sick and we had to sell the hotel. But we still doubled our money and it was very good. And I believe the city of Bonita Springs in the old downtown has a lot of similarities with Bay Shore. And I believe that the Imperial River needs a touch of magic, totally different from the DPC. And I have the resources and I have the team of people that can really make it happen, and totally different from what DPC proposed. I believe in the concern of all the council members and the mayor on the return on the money. And letting go the property might also not be a good idea, even though as a developer, you prefer to have total control on the land. But I would like to find out, or ask a public question, what is the next step then with the Imperial Crossing? What would you want to do? I mean, I could prepare a presentation. Of course, I, we're coming into Thanksgiving and Christmas. And a lot of the talents are going to tell me, Marie V., take a hike, because we're not coming back until January. We're not ready. They're just busy putting out the projects that they have to finish for the year. So in reality, I'm making a comment that I am in total agreement with your concerns that it really needs something totally different than what we saw here today, what was proposed from DPC. But also, what are the steps if a group of imagineers, like I am part of? If we want to put something together, what is our right to do it? Or are we going to be wasting our time and having people copy our ideas? That's the other concern. So what will be the next step?
Well, I mean, this is not a Q and A session, but we would certainly guide you to work with staff and exchange information.
We can get information back of the next step as, as we, as council moves forward and sets parameters for the next step for the Imperial Crossing. The direction you've given to us, we can provide you with that. So you'll know when the RFP is available and, and the timeline of what we're going to set.
So then I will communicate with you and give you my contact information and then we'll go from there?
Yes, ma'am.
Beautiful. All right, then that's the end of it all.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Can I get your card too?
Can't help myself. Mr. Magnus, both of you, you actually have a beautiful proposal. And if it was done any other place downtown besides the city-owned lot, I would probably be for it. I've just said over and over, I think we need that for parking. I would even consider a lease because then eventually we would get the lot back if it didn't turn out. But you did a beautiful job. I don't always agree with your decisions, but I think you did actually seriously think about how to do this right. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. I'm city attorney items.
I only have one that I'm, I'm loath to bring up at this point, but in the, in the, in the back and forth with FGCU over the Waterkeeper and the, how we, we coordinate our, our press releases. The recommendation that I received today from FGCU was, would, would be opposed to changing the name to the Southwest Florida Waterkeeper. I did, I did not think so. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed was direction.
Okay, we all right? Everybody happy? Okay, thank you, Derek. Thank you. You had a, you had a busy day today. Thank you very much. Arlene, city manager's items.
Yes, well, I'll keep this brief. Laura is here as well, but basically, we're looking for some direction from city council as we are moved into Phase 3. There are applications that are now, most of the applications for special events have been in the, are looked at to the spring, coming in the spring. But we do have a few that have come in on private property. We would like at the next meeting to come back to you to talk about the ones on public property and the plan. But I'll let Laura explain both that, but we have administrative approval types and we'd like to get some direction that, if you'd like us to move forward and then if, if we may move forward, that we would be, that we would require them all to provide a COVID safety plan. But I'll let Laura explain.
So Laura Taylor, communications director. I believe that Arlene covered most of that. What we have seen, since council did kind of put special event permits on hold in March, a lot of the event organizers themselves decided they were going to postpone their event or cancel their event altogether. So we really haven't had many applications come in. Currently, we have three pending. The one we're talking about today, or, or the direction we're looking for, is just to see whether or not we should go forward with event permitting on private property.
Absolutely.
Why not? Yeah.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't follow the CDC. I'd follow the governor's guideline. The CDC flips, you know, all the time. So why don't we just follow the governors?
The, the other direction we're asking for is we would like at an administrative level to require a COVID safety plan with the application.
And we have been doing that already, working with our, with our organizers, so that when their special event permit is able to go forward, that they are completely ready, their applications are in place, and they're happy to do that. We have many 2021 applications that have COVID plans in them already.
Okay, Sharon? Any objection? Okay.
No, I think we have our direction. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Laura.
For the COVID data, just, we just want to continue to remind everyone to visit the leecares.com website. There is continued assistance for both businesses and the round three of individual assistance as well that's available. And the last item, I know Amy's not here, but she had, you know, talked to staff again about looking at having a workshop as soon as possible. I did confirm with Derek that we would be able to have a, have a workshop prior to the swearing-in if, if, and I, we were looking at some Mondays. So, so we will be emailing you to discuss the possibility of, you know, possibly Monday, the 9th or the 16th, before we get into the Thanksgiving holidays. But there is an ability for the new members of the council, the newly elected members of council, before being sworn in to participate in a workshop. There's not a legal issue with that.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor and council member reports. Fred?
No, I don't really have anything to report.
Great, thank you. Mike?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Chris? Laura?
I'm good.
Jesse?
Good.
Okay, approval of the minutes for October 7th.
So moved, so moved.
Been a motion and a second to approve? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Simmons?
Hi.
Councilman Corey?
Hi.
Councilman Gibson?
Hi.
Councilman Forbes?
Hi.
Councilman Purdon?
Hi.
Councilman Carr?
Hi.
Councilman Carr.
Great, thank you. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Rick, you okay?
Don't do it, Rick.
All right. Dynamite. Dwight, you want to make last, last call, last comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank.